I was gonna go. James has seen that being asked if I was gonna be able to make it, fortunately that. Two practices tonight.
Yeah, he actually is cold really.
Yeah, we've just been warming up. Yeah, we've got a tournament this week. Send it for charter buses now. Send it. The team's going down at one early and then they're taking. Oh, yeah. He says. I always wanted to finish. Actually, I just had to say that. Twenty twice. He was. Discovering that. I'm sorry. Miles. So now. To where is the brightest? He's like. Always because of the change. Said oil sock man. Said so. This is Brian's. I said, you're killing me. Can I just tell? Yeah. I'd rather. So I'd rather you didn't. So maybe you could have killed, right? They won by like twenties.
Morning, who do we have? You were. Where are you, Jason?
Oh, shit. All right, we're live. Like. We're supposed to read something from Jamie.
Now she have demands.
You have it? Okay. Yes, I was just at a breakfast and I was. I was at a breakfast. Okay. So on your reading. She like. I just.
How we doing, sir? Morning, everyone. We ask you to please rise if you're able. There'll be prayer and pledge and leaves before we convene the commissioners for the meeting. So. Heavenly Father, we gather this morning in humility and thank you for your many blessings. We ask you for your guidance and strength. This Saturday will remember the National Vietnam War Veterans Day. It was on this date, on that date, nineteen seventy-three. Combat Combat Support Units withdrew from South Vietnam. Slightly more than two million Americans. There was in uniform in Vietnam, Southeast, Southeast Asia. They travel across the world and fight against oppression in the name of freedom. We publicly thank, support, and honor those veterans for their service. We thank you for the heroes that sacrificed for our freedoms. May you be with those that serve and meet their needs daily. We pray for all that have served and are currently serving and protect us at home and abroad. May your hand of safety be over them daily. We ask that you lead us this morning in our decisions. These things we ask in your name, amen. Like. The United States of America and to the Republic of which is. One nation under God and in this law, liberty is just as for all. Morning, at this time we convene our commissioners public meeting. And we'll ask for approval in minutes of the previous meeting. I'll make the motion. I'll second. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any public comment on Jan Zola at this time? The alignment?
Not on agenda.
Okay, thank you. Then we have a very special proclamation at this time. Can I ask Commissioner Sorban to please read it and we'll have some speakers?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Um. This is a proclamation for the Vietnam War Area Veterans Day. Whereas the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act was signed into law in twenty seventeen, designating March twenty-ninth as the National Vietnam War Veterans Day. Whereas by presidential proclamation of the commemoration of the fiftieth anniversary of the Vietnam War, joined six other military-centric annual observances. And whereas the objectives for the commemoration have been to thank and honor all the veterans of the Vietnam War and their families and their service and sacrifice. And to recognize former prisoners of war and the families of those still listed as missing in action. Whereas no distinction is made between Vietnam, or excuse me, between veterans who served in country and theater or who were stationed elsewhere during the Vietnam War period. We are all called to serve and none could self-determine where they would serve. And whereas in the acknowledgement of the unspeakable hardships of our veterans suffered endangering their lives for the values of freedom, democracy for all. And whereas today, we remember the men and women of Lycoming County and their families who served our nation with honor, courage, valor, and distinction from November nineteen fifty-five to April nineteen seventy-five, as well as the forty-three Lycoming County soldiers, sailors, Marines, and airmen killed or missing in action. And whereas today, we thank them for their service and sacrifice. And we forever grateful for the valuable contributions they continue to make today. Therefore, be it resolved, the Lycoming County Commissioners, on behalf of the grateful citizens of our county, urge all citizens to join us in recognizing March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five as a tribute to the veterans of the Vietnam era war, the sacrifices they made and they continue to make on our behalf. Signed, the Lycoming County Commissioners, Scott Metzger, Chairman, Mark Sortman, Vice Chairman, and Mark Messina, Secretary. I'd like to present this to Mike McMunn.
Mike, would you like to come up, please, and say a few words? Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, Matt. National Vietnam War Veterans Day will be commemorated on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. This year will be the conclusion of the fiftieth anniversary of the Vietnam War era, as it marks the formal end of the Vietnam War. Due to the lack of accurate records, not possible to know exactly how many men and women from Lycoming County served during the Vietnam War, but it was in the thousands. During that period, the draft was in effect. So many either enlisted and were drafted. Some were draft-induced enlistments where men volunteered, so they had some choice of assignment. Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act of twenty seventeen, as you alluded to, was signed into law by the United States President Donald Trump, designating every March twenty-ninth as National Vietnam War Veterans Day. Pennsylvania Governor Josh Shapiro has issued a formal proclamation designating March twenty-ninth as Vietnam Veteran Recognition Day. And today, the Lycoming County Board of Commissioners has issued a similar proclamation on behalf of the county. Forty-three men from Lycoming County died during the war, including one who was listed as missing in action, body not recovered. That man was Major James M. Garrick, B-52 pilot, whose aircraft crashed in the South China Sea following a mid-air collision. As a veteran of the United States Army and a veteran of the Vietnam War, I served alongside thousands of individuals whose lives were disrupted by the war, taking place halfway around the world in a place most had never heard of. I want to share my pride in the service of all the men and women who served during the Vietnam era. The residuals of the war are seen every day in the Veterans Affairs Office, where veterans apply for health care and compensation for their service-connected disabilities. Men and women regularly file in for benefits for post-traumatic stress disorder, disabilities related to the effects of Agent Orange, and residuals of combat injuries. I want you to know that every day is Vietnam Veteran Recognition Day in the Veterans Affairs Office. At this time, I'd like to ask all the Vietnam era veterans in the audience to please stand and be recognized.
Actually, I'm a little too young for Vietnam, but I'm standing representing Andy Palmer, who couldn't be here today.
Thanks, Matt. Following this meeting, everyone is invited to the Veterans Affairs Office on the second floor for chili, hot dogs, coffee, cornbread, and camaraderie. So thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
I would like to commend him good enough about age. Twenty-three gallons of that if she was Vietnam. By Monsanto and that. How many veterans die, we'll never know, but a lot of veterans back in this country give their lives afterwards because effects of age. And also, one million of you suffered death from use of age. Watch our home government voices. Glad to see that you brought it up. That's something to talk about.
Yep, yep, thank you. John. Uh, we have Jennifer from the Pennsylvania State Veterans Affairs Office here. I'd like to recognize her. Would you like to say anything?
The officer by. Was here to pay vacation.
Thank you, Warden.
We have Pennsylvania Representative Joe Hamm here. Joe, would you like to say anything? Please come up to the podium. Thank you for being here. Jennifer, thank you for being here also.
So I didn't prepare any speeches, wasn't planning to speak. I was here to honor you, honor you for your service. As my fellow veterans, I thank you. I know as Vietnam War veterans, um, you didn't get the welcome that you deserved when you come home. I understand from much of what I've read and heard personally, the stories of being spit on, being treated like second-class citizens.
Third class is more like it, Joe, in this respect.
And, and, and the point is, we owe you a debt of gratitude we'll never be able to repay. Thank you. Thank you for your service. I want to thank the county for recognizing our veterans right here in our community. Um, these men continue to serve, many of them in their VFWs, their American Legions, on, uh, uh, the drill teams, on, um, teams that, that conduct funerals. And, and so these men continue to serve, and I just again want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for your service and know that Pennsylvania and America supports our Vietnam vets. Thank you.
And, uh, Matt from Senator Yall's office, would you like to say anything, please?
Yeah, I'll say a few words.
Matt Wise, thank you, Matt, for being here.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. I'm Matt Wise. I'm the District Director for Senator Gene Yall. Uh, as many of you know, the senator is a veteran himself of the United States Army. Um, and he really was upset that he couldn't be here this morning. Um, he had a scheduling conflict. He's still in Harrisburg, uh, after a week back to session, but, um, he does send his regards and thank you, uh, for everybody who, uh, is here. Thank you to the Commissioners. Now, as Representative Hamm put it, um, not every county does this for their veterans, so thank you for doing this and, uh, thank you all for your service and your continued service to, to what we do. I personally did not serve in the military, but I am thankful every day for those of you who did, uh, because that allows us to stand here today and do what it is that we do in our own way. So again, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity, um, and thanks for your service.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
I've often said there's three populations that aren't thanked enough, and one is law enforcement, EMS, and fire who protect us, keep us safe. Second is the farmers who feed us. And most importantly, the veterans who have fought and protected our freedoms. We would not be free today if it wasn't for you folks sitting in this office and the millions that have fought for our freedoms. And, and since I've been a commissioner, my top priority to always honor our veterans. You can't thank them enough, and I've stressed to the young people, you know, you see a veteran, thank them. Ask them what branch of service they were in and what they did, what they went through. You know, we, I just shared with Natalie here, we go out and the one cemetery, uh, down on the eastern end of the county, our little leaguers put uh, flags on the veterans' graves. And I tell the kids, you know, look down at this stone, say their name, thank them, hope to see what branch they were in, and never forget them because what they've done. Their sacrifice is beyond all measure. And, uh, not only them, but their families, because their families were left without them and may still to be to this day. So, so vital that we thank our veterans, honor them every opportunity that we get. So, this is, this is something that we have to do every year. It's necessary, and it shouldn't be just one time a year. You know, you see a veteran have a hat on, you see him, go thank him. Do something special for him. Because, uh, they did something far more special for us that we cannot thank them enough for. So thank you for your service. Yes.
Tell somebody, tell people a short story.
Uh, yeah, be glad. I was gonna ask anyone who wanted to come up. If it's okay, I'm gonna ask the two Commissioners if they have anything to say. Then I want anyone who wants to come and say, speak. Be glad to have you here. We're so thankful that you're here today, and it's, it's our privilege to honor you. So Commissioners?
Yeah, uh, what I, what I would add, obviously, you know, is the thank you that everybody has said, you know, we, we would not be here today if it wasn't for veterans such as yourself. Um, and I, and I think it's, I appreciate, uh, Matt Wise's comment that, uh, uh, not every county does it. So I'm proud to be part of a county that, uh, we are fortunate to have Wahoo Drive Memorial up there that, that people can drive by every day and, and thank the veterans of Lycoming County. So I'm proud to be part of a county that recognizes that. I think our youth recognizes it more here in Lycoming County, and, and I appreciate that from, from everybody, but I appreciate that Wahoo Drive, uh.
Thank George Logan for that.
Yes, Mr., yeah, Mr. Logan, who's no longer with us, that, that started that on behalf of his brother. What, what a wonderful, uh, memorial we have up there that, that a lot of counties don't have as well, so. But again, thank you, guys. We appreciate, uh, the service of the men and women of our military. Uh, and as Commissioner Metzger said, I think, uh, way too many people forget to, to thank the veterans for the lifestyle we have that we, we very easily could not have. Thank you.
Um. Well, I'll start by saying a minute ago when Matt stood up and said he was too young to remember the Vietnam War. It's the first time in a while Matt's been able to say he was too young for something. I think he really jumped on that opportunity. I'm too, I was born in nineteen seventy-one, so everything I know about Vietnam is retrospectively, you know, historically, and, and you hear and you, you read about, you see in the movies how the, the veterans were treated and how you guys have talked about how you were treated on your return. And, um, I, I think now we see a, a great change, I think, in our respect for, for veterans and, you know, historically, and, and I think, um, if there's any solace in, and this is just a guy who's, who's looking at it from a historical aspect. I think in time, as people realize, whether they were for the war, they were against the war, and, you know, all wars are ugly and brutal and, but, um, you guys were doing your job that you, you, you know, you didn't pick it. And you, you know, whether you enlisted or not, you know, you don't get to make the choices. And, and I think society learned from your generation that, um, we need to respect the soldiers more because they didn't, you know, they didn't have the freedom of choice. So, um, if there's any solace in that, I think now you see, uh, veterans are respected and they're thanked and, and because you guys were, we have learned, um, how, how wrong it was and how poorly treated you were, and now I don't think it's ever gonna happen again. So if there's any solace in that, I think, I think you guys taught society a lesson and I, I, um, unfortunately, you had to go through it. But kind of because you went through it, I don't think anyone's gonna go through it again.
Thank you. This time I love to hear from, we love to hear from many veterans. This gentleman asked me, so if you come up first? Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Uh, my name's Al Saber. Uh, I fought in Vietnam nineteen sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, and seventy-two, fought in Cambodia, fought in Laos. I wrote a book on my retirement in Vietnam. And every now and then I talk to high school students about it, and one of the things I bring out is that people don't remember is how divisive the war was. It broke families apart and all. Right after my book came out, I get a call one night, woman from Canada. She said, you don't know this, but my cousins, Bill Scott, who's in the dedication of my book, I saw him die February twenty-first, sixty died. When Billy got killed, his family refused his body. Oh. His grandmother had to accept his body. His grandmother buried him. His family was very anti-war. And she said, they have never gone to his grave. That's how, times are tough.
That's, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. John?
Morning.
John Charman, I was in the Navy from sixty-nine to seventy. I served in a place called Chu Lai, Vietnam, halfway between Da Nang and Cam Rong. We operated a sand ramp that unloaded supplies twenty-four hours a day. Uh, I think some people need to know the history of the Vietnam War, especially one, uh, reporter from the Web Weekly who ran a article here, but mentioned three Democratic presidents, but ignored two Republican presidents. After, after World War Two, Truman started some stuff, uh, aid in Vietnam to South Vietnam. Nineteen fifty-five, the Sito treaty, uh, treaty, Southeast Asian Treaty Organization, I believe, was called Sito, was formed. And Eisenhower put seven hundred advisors in South Vietnam and supplied them with arms, but it was a lackadaisical effort. And the author of the article here is correct with the assassination of John Kennedy, it did make a diff- difference in the Vietnam War. Lyndon Johnson did really ramp it up with things. However, he forgets to mention that part of the Vietnam War, Richard Nixon was President of the United States with it, and we didn't pull out till, what, seventy-three with things. And, uh, there were a lot of arms left then in Vietnam. Uh, the equivalent is same as, uh, what was left in Afghanistan. It felt when Vietnam fell in seventy-five. The author, he felt bad about the demonstrations that took part in this country. And then he got his deferment lifted. Well, if he was really interested in serving, maybe he should have after he got his deferment or dropped his deferment a little earlier and had the nerve to, 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 uh, join, join the service. When he ref- when he had requested his deferment, he dropped in seventy-one. There was already a pullout starting from Vietnam, so there wasn't too much of him getting drafted at the time. But to put just, oh, yeah, and one other thing. He listed Jimmy Carter as, uh, pardoning those who, who just diserted, went to, went to Canada and that with it. Well, you know, that took a certain amount of courage to do that. We might not agree with it, but, um, to say that they should have been putting, those objectors who should have been put in jail, that's pretty rich for somebody who didn't have the nerve to, nerve to serve our country.
Anybody else like to speak? Thank you. Yes, sir.
Are we still talking? We just started meeting, right?
No, we just started, I mean, yes. Come on up. You just come up to the podium and identify yourself, please.
My name is, uh, Walter C. Steinhardt, I served as Berber Battalion, twenty-sixth, third landing team, Berber Battalion, twenty-sixth, third landing team. I don't always have a candy colored message, so hold on. Yeah, Vietnam is quite a journey. I, I have a book, Point Man Up. I'm very humble about it because I'm a, I'm a friggin' walking miracle. I shouldn't be here. But I'm, right now, I'm very concerned about our country, in, in fact, very, uh, I'm, I'm concerned. We are going down a black hole. Okay, greetings. I usually don't write stuff, it comes right out of the head. But I did today because I don't want to miss any point. Greetings, losers and suckers. You weren't, these are all quotes. And don't fact check me because they're, they're, they were witnessed by a four-star Marine general. What does it take to become a four-star Marine general? Kelly. Anyway, you weren't clever enough to avoid going to Vietnam. Quote. The T-Man had four phony deferments and a wealthy father. Howard Stern. And I hope I don't go over three minutes. Howard Stern, I, I'll try to keep it short again. Howard Stern interviewed the T-Man about venereal disease. He smirked and said, I guess that was my Vietnam. As if that was as bad as getting shot at in a war every day of your life. Could, could get out of the car at Omaha Beach where thousands of Americans died June sixth, nineteen forty-four. He didn't want to get his eighty-five thousand dollar a year hair wet. He sent General Kelly out in the rain. Kelly was used to the rain. We lived in the rain and the muck and the slime. Look, look on your funny phones. We're in, uh, check it out. Most disgust, disgusting thing that ever was done by Amer- American president and a vice president. When Vice President Zelensky was from Ukraine was bullied in the White House. How disgraceful. Our Senator Muse said good things are happening at a meeting in Williamsport about three weeks ago. What? Blasting from people at the bottom of the food chain. Two billionaires are doing this. We, and we have to do something. Billionaires will not save this country. There are, and there are eight hundred billionaires in this country. The mon- there is enough gas flow in this country to cut the government down with just a little bit from each one of them. And I'm just about done. And I'm, I'm putting up, uh, by flag, American flag here. It's gonna be upside down because we are in, it's a distress signal, and I'm not ashamed of it. We are in distress. Green flag will be below it. On the side will be Mexico, Canada, and Ukraine. I love you guys all.
Morning Commissioners, thank you very much for honoring those of us who did serve. I served in Vietnam sixty-four to sixty-five in the United States Army Signal Corps. And thank God, I didn't have to kill anybody. But it was, it was constant danger when they put me on a helicopter to resupply top-secret crypto to infantry or armor or field reunit. And, uh, the vehicle got so quick to recognize uh, when we would come in that, uh, it was, it was really treacherous to drop off that stuff. I was supposed to get a signature from the receiving officer. And the pilot said, hell no, get out of here. We're, we're, we gotta leave. They're gonna shoot us. And, uh, so it was a big lesson for me about community service. And I think that it has helped me to go on to, to help make our community better. Uh, these Commissioners know, but I served here as County Planning Director for thirty-eight years. And, uh, very proud of Lycoming County and, uh, all our communities here and our municipal municipalities like Mark, you were a big leader in Losoc. But, uh, we have a very tremendous quality of life here that we all need to appreciate and celebrate and help to support with our volunteer work.
Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else? Your house.
I wonder if I'm by Mark.
Hold on. Hold on.
That's how quickly he ran the hundred.
That was pretty good.
Thank you. My name is Ray Huff. I served in Vietnam nineteen seventy and seventy-one. I was in the Air Force, but for some reason they put me with the Army. And it was great ever after that. But anyway, one group, and it was alluded to before, that needs to be thanked profusively would be the spouses. They put up with so much. And I want to thank them for that. And we also dovetailing what was said earlier, we have to watch out for veterans benefits because it appears that they're under attack right now. And hopefully, in this venue and beyond, we can make sure that doesn't happen. You know, words are wonderful. Actions are better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, we'd like to get a picture with you with the proclamation.
You can let everybody speak.
Absolutely. So. Take it out. Absolutely, yeah. Yeah. Not everyone is serving.
God bless our veterans.
Thank you.
Proclamation's for all of them.
And those of you who support us.
Veterans be remembered twice a year on Memorial Day and back in November.
Thanks.
You're holding lighted down to the
I make Messina wear that color once in a while.
I can't go now. My kid's baseball game was yesterday. It's so cold.
Okay.
It was cold.
Moving on to bid openings, Nikki has said.
Mike's gonna say, before we get started here with that, I just wanted to mention, it's, it's good that you guys have written books about your experiences. Because we keep learning so much of, of the great history of our country through war stories. I just saw a movie that I had no, I had no knowledge of before. I think it was called Six Triple Eight. About the all-black female regiment that was sent to Europe to sort mail during World War Two because the mail wasn't moving. And I'd never heard of it. I was flicking, I think it was on Netflix. I was flicking through and my mom and I watched it. It was fascinating. And so many of these stories, you know, we've heard of the Tuskegee Airmen, and I've seen that movie too, but that these stories keep coming along. And you realize, you know, the greatness and for their story, part of the sadness of America, because they talked about how much better they were treated in Europe than they were treated when they returned back home. But it's wonderful that you guys have written your stories down for generations to come to because there's, there's so much greatness that would have got lost if we, if we didn't have these. And it really is a reflection on, on America and how we got to where we are. And now I'm done. You can go.
Good morning. We have one bid due for cattle grazing. Excuse me, I lost my voice, so. We received two bids for that Lourston Angus Farms, three thousand one dollar. And Paul Haven Farms, two thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars.
Okay, thank you, Nikki.
You're welcome.
Moving on to reports.
Presented for your ratification or invoice is due through April second, twenty twenty-five, to be paid on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of two million six hundred sixteen thousand five hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-six cents. Eighty-one point seven one percent out of the general fund, nine point nine nine percent out of other grants, six point four six percent out of RMS, and one point eight five percent out of escrow.
Okay, is your motion accept the first, I'm sorry, the cash requirements report?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Oh, second. All fair side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Personnel actions, Mike.
All right, good morning. Approve the following personnel actions. This is conditional offers of employment subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions as outlined in attachment A. Damn not the popular one now.
They didn't come to see me.
Facilities management, Haley Phillips, custodial worker, pay grade three, full-time, thirteen dollars point eight one one two cents per hour, seventy-five hours per pay period with an anticipated start date April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Facilities management, Mayana Sampson, custodial worker, pay grade three, full-time, thirteen dollars point two eight cents per hour, seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated start date April seventh, twenty twenty-five. And resource management, Todd Shallow, truck driver slash transfer station, pay grade six, full-time, eighteen dollars per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date April seventh, twenty twenty-five. And the last one's in resource management, Louis Camper, truck driver at the transfer station, pay grade six, full-time, eighteen dollars fifty-four cents per hour, eighty hours per pay period with an anticipated start date April seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Taking on a motion accept the personnel actions.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
All second. All fair side.
Aye. Before Mike sits down, we also, oh, I also want to mention that Mike is veteran as well. And he was like, Ray, you were, you were in one branch, but they sent you to work with another branch because you were an Air Force guy? And they threw you out of the Air Force and made you go work with the Army. I knew that. I knew that. But yours was because you were so good. Isn't that why?
So good.
You were so good.
Yeah, I'm gonna go with that. Go work with that.
Mr. Ray, just for transparency?
Yes.
Transparency. I'm just curious. We have, so we have two exec jobs in facility management, two exec jobs in resource management. Both the same pay grades. Why different per hour rates?
Yeah, good question. The compensation policy would step in on that one. So someone might have had a little more experience than needed, so they may get up to twelve percent difference in pay. So not, not knowing offhand, I would, I'd just say one probably had more experience and received a little bit more in pay. So I believe whatever is above the requirement, so if it's two years and they have ten years experience, they'd get eight percent as our compensation policy is stated.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to action items.
Five point one, Jason's still on?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, both approve the south entrance MPDS permit for PA Department of Environmental Protection. Anytime we do any disturbance or plan to do any disturbance of greater than an acre of soil, you have to have a NFT's permit. So this is for the south entrance. This was already in the works. We, we're not doing this project, but we want to get all the permits in line and the project to be a package.
Lisa, how much would the permits cost?
There will be three checks, eight hundred dollars to the Commonwealth of Clean Water, five hundred dollars to the Clean Water Fund for Lake Coming County, and thirteen fifty to Lake Coming County Conservation District. It's a total of twenty-six hundred and fifty dollars.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table that until we have some time to have our financial team review. You know, how long we have if we put this contract through now, since this is not currently scheduled that.
So it's a motion to table. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second the motion to table.
All fair side.
Aye.
Table at this point. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Yeah, Beth.
Five point two, Beth, are you on?
I am.
Where are you, Beth?
Good morning, Commissioners. This contract is for Letty Electric for labor and materials provided, and has been decided for the nine-one-one center, backup nine-one-one center, and power supply. It is a budgeted item for twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Promotion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you.
Point three, three. Five point six, Brian.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to kind of make a little bit of a correction with regards to five point three, rather than identifying each individual item. It should be just that we're voting to approve a RACP grant application on behalf of Valley View with the Office of Budget. That project's in the amount of two million five hundred thousand dollars. This is simply a pass-through. They are not able to apply themselves because they are not considered a municipality. As a result, you have to apply on their behalf for the project and then you just pass the money through to them.
Okay. Your motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
All right, the next item I have for you is vote to approve resolution twenty twenty-five, six, authorizing Matt Long as the Singularity Approver for the lease documents under the cattle chute program on behalf of the county. So when, with this cattle chute program, there's a lease document that has to be signed by farmers as they lease the equipment. And he's gonna serve and act on our behalf to do that.
I believe it's already used once.
Yep.
That's good. And that program was funded by DARPA ones?
Yes, that is correct.
Good. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I have a question.
All fair side.
The next item I have for you is vote to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven for the auction of miscellaneous IT surplus equipment. So we have, we do this usually on a quarterly basis or as needed. We have significant amount of property that we have that are no longer usable, so we're just putting it out to auction.
A motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All fair side.
Aye.
And then the last item I have for you is vote to approve the emergency watershed protection grant application. This is in relation to Tropical Storm Debbie damage, and that's in the amount of one million six hundred sixteen thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars. There's approximately seven sites that have been approved thus far and committed from the federal government. However, the other half of the projects, which I believe were, I think it's eleven, no, fourteen, excuse me, are actually, were approved, however, it's stuck in the federal freeze. So once that becomes available, which we're, we're certain that they'll lift, we'll then amend the agreement to include the additional sites. But right now, the seven sites that we have approval on, we would like to move forward with those. And those are all located in the trout run area.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Five point seven, three, ten, Adrian.
Morning.
Item five point seven, I'm seeking approval of a professional services agreement with attorney Elizabeth White to provide legal representation as needed in guardianship proceeding. The cost is ninety dollars per hour, the total of which is not expected to exceed nine thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and ninety-nine cents. And this is an approved budgeted item.
The motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
And item five point eight, I'm seeking approval of a professional services agreement with attorney Patricia Shipman to provide legal representation as needed when the P D office has a conflict. The cost again is ninety dollars per hour, the total of which is not expected to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. And this is an approved budgeted item.
New accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side. Aye.
Item five point nine, I'm seeking approval of a professional services agreement with Language Services Associates, Inc. Provide telephonic interpretation services as needed. The cost is a dollar twenty-five per minute, the total of which is not expected to exceed nine thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. And this is forty percent approximately reimbursable by the state.
Motion accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Aye.
One more item, five point ten, I'm seeking approval of a professional services agreement with attorney Dan Stryer to provide legal representation as needed. Again, when the public defender's office has a conflict. The cost is ninety dollars per hour, the total of which is not expected to exceed nine thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and ninety-nine cents. And again, this is an approved budgeted item.
A motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
Five eleven, Kelsey.
Where are you, Kelsey?
Good morning, Commissioners. Today I have for you five point eleven for your approval, the cap sub-recipient agreement with Loyalsoc for a hundred thousand dollars. And this is in the budget for this year.
Okay. Can you explain a little bit about this?
So this is one of the sediment reduction projects that is happening in the Loyalsoc area. I can't off the top of my head tell you all of the details of the project. But Loyalsoc has been honestly great to work with and are able to do most of the work in-house.
Great. Thank you. Eddie, you want to add to that?
I think this was part of, well, I am, so it's a part of the Miller Run, yeah, projects they can work it on.
Yeah.
It was all part of the, you know, storm cleanup and MS four programs and everything.
Okay, motion accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Aye.
Thank you, Kelsey.
For coming.
Just want to wish the best of luck to Lady Lancers tonight. Down at Hershey for the state championship. It's fantastic what, they build a great program. And it's fantastic, a school that size can beat on a state level, especially with some of these charter schools. And it's, I wish them the best, whether they win or lose, they're champions. But we hope that they come back with a crown and, but they they have a great program there and as many programs throughout the county. I mean, wrestling and we have some state champion wrestlers in the area. We're richly blessed, not only in sports in this county, but academics with the kids. We just open a paper, you see the different championships and titles they've won, and it's fantastic to see the youth excelling in our county, so. God bless each one of them.
Well, I thought I was gonna steal that part from Commissioner Messina, but the chairman stole that part. Since he's our, since he's our sports guy. But yeah, I too want to, you know, put a little shout out to the Loyalsoc girls basketball. What a, what a great honor for them to have made it this far. And I'll put a little shout out to my favorite Loyalsoc Lancer girl, Addie Fashion. Hopefully she does very well tonight, but good luck to the entire team. I'll also put a congratulations out and good luck to the Hughesville wrestling team. I believe there's about five of the wrestlers that are going way far west. I forget the state they're going out to, to compete again in, in a big tournament out there. You know, best of luck to them as well. And sorry to take all the sports away from
I can't, I can't go tonight. I went to see them play in Allentown on last Friday. They played great. I hope they didn't leave it on Allentown because that was, that was, they were playing what they thought was the best team in the state and they beat them by nineteen. Um, so they were really, and the Bastion girl played really, really well, um, because their, their point guard got in foul trouble and, and she had to play a lot more minutes than she usually does. And she was, she played really, really well. So, um, yeah, and I have my baseball tie on because today's baseball's opening day, so.
Everybody's in first place.
It, it worked, yeah, nobody's lost yet.
Yeah.
And, uh, it is, it's unique that we, you know, we talk so much about our, our military history today and, and there's no sport that is more ingrained in American history than baseball. Um, and you know, the, the Ted Williamses and, and, uh, you know, the, the Joe DiMaggio's and the guys who fought during World War Two. Um, it was just, we couldn't imagine that today, that, that, uh, uh, a sports star would, would stop playing to go fight. But that's what they did back then and it was, um, so, so yeah, and, and also when you see baseball opening day, you know that warmth has to be close. Uh, I see Saturday, it's supposed to be like Saturday's five degrees, so it's, it's coming. But that's all, when you know, when baseball arrives, you know, warm weather's coming too, but for those of us, pollen is coming too, so. So we, it's warm, but we can't breathe, so, um, you know, at least some of us can't. So we, we, you take the good with the bad, but yes, it, it's a, it's a special day.
All of us can't breathe, it's cold. Anything else? No, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Public comment?
Public comment, away from the audience.
Morning, John Sherman, Jersey Shore, Pennsylvania. Just want to again thank the Commissioners for the recognition that was given today and the opportunity to talk. And one gentleman pointed out here, there are being made about eighty-four thousand, eighty-four thousand positions cut from the VA, which is going to affect the VA greatly in services that they can render. And also about sixty's, what, sixty thousand or better cut from the Pentagon. Their budget's being cut by fifty billion dollars per year for the next five years. Not a good situation. Haven't been here for a long time, but have some questions to ask concerning last year's budget. Am I correct in saying, saying that you had to borrow funds, uh, in October to get through till the end of the year? Were short on money at that time?
Yes.
Yeah. How much did you have to, what, how much, how much were you short? What, what?
Well, we did a TRAN.
Pardon?
We did what they call a TRAN, Nikki.
Yes, it's a tax revenue and it's a patient.
Okay, you did a tax and patient bond or whatever you want to call it. How much was the bond for?
It was, uh, up to ten million.
It was up to ten.
Yeah. Yeah, but we didn't need that much.
Okay.
At that time, no.
And I, I'm not picking today, I'm asking a question. And you also floated it, I believe, a bond for building repairs also.
Yes.
How much was that also?
We're not, we haven't got the bond yet, we're in the process of applying for a bond, which would be something we're hoping to have done by June. Uh, but the, uh.
What would be the anticipated amount?
Uh, we're looking up to ten million for that to do general improvements, the, uh, uh, repairs on buildings, things like that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And for those people who haven't before, visit a VA hospital, either Altoona, Wilkes-Barre, uh, Philadelphia or Pittsburgh, you'd be surprised the number amount of veterans that are in need of care, old suckers like I am, but we, you know, veterans are getting older. And I have, can say nothing but good praise about the VA care I've gotten in Altoona. But go to a VA facility, those who are in question of things and see what they do. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Do you know if any of those facilities are endangered?
Well, don't take me for, for bait, but a lot. But I, what is, what it might impact from what I know, and I've been trying to keep informed on it. This is, they're saying our, our, our benefits won't be cut. But what will possibly happen and what a lot of veterans are scared of is is they're cutting into different, different positions that might impact people from getting, when they ask for care until they get it. You know what I'm trying to say in that respect? And the first two thousand that were, were laid off were those who were, uh, handling, um, crisis loans and, and, and that. So anybody that tells you that it's not going to have an impact, it will. Because there's, because what they're trying to do is that they're trying to take it back to from four, four hundred and twenty-five thousand employed by, they want to take it back to about four hundred thousand, uh, which would have been nine, twenty nineteen level. And in what the increase, Vietnam veterans and the two other conflicts we begin in and everything else, it's going to put a, a great strain on the VA and it's not good for morale and what's happening. And I'll be very truthful about as far as I'm concerned and other ones, with what is being proposed is a rape of the VA and, and our armed services. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you for your time this morning and thank you for honoring our veterans. Too often, um, I see people walking down the street and somebody will go by with a veteran hat on and they don't even acknowledge them. I make it a point, uh, my grandfather was in World War Two. I had two great uncles, lost one, um, in airborne. He was shot down, never recovered and, um, my great uncle Ray was a Marine. And I made the mistake when Thomas saying that he was a Marine and he said, no, once a Marine, always a Marine. So I was quickly corrected with that. So, but it was, I think it's wonderful what you did here this morning with the gentlemen and their spouses and their families. Um, my name is Denise Artley, I am from Muncie Township and I'm coming just with a question in regards to, um, I had seen a post on, it was on Facebook through the North Central VA website, uh, information and their news link, but it had stated about with the district down there, which used to be the old Lycoming Mall, about, um, one of the Commissioners had mentioned that they, they're planning on putting housing down there. And I just kind of wanted to get maybe clarification this morning, if that is true, because I've been told by Famvest, um, Ara specifically, that they were not looking to put housing down there. Cause I've been getting a lot of questions from residents, you know, being concerned with that issue. As they still think it's, you know, low income housing or whatever it may be, but.
Well, we know, one, there's lots of plans and, um, they, they kind of, I don't say there's a domino effect, but depending on how they can start is, is how they, um, where they're going to go from there. So nothing is concrete yet. Um, I know that it had been discussed that they have, um, one of the, the things that they've looked at is a multi-use and, and for whatever businesses are there, that if they put townhouses or if they put condos or something like that, it, it would be, it could be beneficial to the whole program, depending on what, I say program, it's a whole complex, depending on what else goes into the complex. Um, there's never been a discussion of low income housing.
Okay.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't fit with the area with what they're trying to do.
Okay.
Um, there's certainly places in our, in society for low income housing, but what that project is, it wouldn't, and they want, um, what is, what is the common term?
Market rate.
Market rate housing is, is what they're looking to do. And they, they do realize that we, we've seen lately, um, where townhouse developments have, have worked well and have sold and, and, um, people are, are encouraged by those, so it's something they would look at. Um, also condos be, as, um, older populations that still want to own, but don't want to have to maintain as much. Um, and it's kind of that, that in-between level that they have a, um, a homeowner's program or, um, you know, something like that. So these are all just things that are being discussed. We, we also know it and Famvest also knows that anything they want to do, um, any ideas they have, has to go through the local planning and they just can't show up and say, hey, we want to do this. Then it would have to be cleared. So at the end of the day, it's something that essentially everyone would agree on, but it's.
I just want to stay abreast on it, because I mean, it will put a strain on our local services, our EMS, our fire and our police, so I just wanted to.
Yes, and we would know, yes.
You know, answers for some of them.
There would be more of that, there would be tax benefit because there would be, and the population wise for the schools would be better and, but yes, there is, there's a, a yin and the yang to all of it. So, but we're just, we're still, we're learning to as, as the process goes. But there is no, you know, ironclad plan as to, they're just kind of, we're, we're figuring it out as we go. They are figuring it out as they go and, um, yes, sir.
Well, I think it's, uh, they can't even get financing, they don't bring their sewer system down before they do that. They can't, as they tried to, trying to get funding and cannot come up on this, cannot come up. Do the corrections of the modifications that need on the sewers. Couple million dollars needed for that. It's done through one of the local, which was through authority or wherever, try to come on out and securing laws for that. Well, that's done, really can't, that's why you have to see my progress, that's why, that's why, that's been the problem.
John, that's a whole lot of speculation. I can assure you the Famvest is working out plans, bring what's best for this area, this county. That area has been identified as a growth corridor. For once was a mall down there, thousands of people. And, uh, there was EMS services for it and there was fire services for it. We need that area to grow. Um, it affects everybody, affects our tax base by not having anything there. I'll give you an example, the reason why our sewer rates have gone up down that area is because those customers have gone away. Okay, so that's just one thing that's attacked. Uh, you know, the sewer authority doesn't have a choice because they don't have as many customers, so they have to raise rates. That, that goes back on everybody else. All right, that's just one example. They have emphasized over and over and over that if there is any kind of housing, it would be market rate housing, it's not low income housing. The nonsense about illegal immigrants living down there is nonsense, it's not going to happen, it has to go through planning, it has to go through zoning. Okay, but these gentlemen want to do what's best for the area. They've been involved in negotiations that are confidential. And, and we cannot divulge any of that information. And once they're able to say something, they're going to say something. They want to bring what's best for this area to Lycoming County.
Okay.
And then that's their, their.
Their agenda.
They've done in Walsock, they've done things extra in Walsock they didn't, they didn't need to do, that the township had asked them to do. So they're good developers and they want to work with the county, they want to work with everybody. And, uh, we had state involved in this, everybody involved in this, trying to do what's best for the county and for the growth corridor down in that area. But it's not going to be housing where it's low income. Thank you.
I thank you for that.
What I said about the sewers, not speculation.
Yes.
I'd like to share, uh, that what are my mistakes when I was counting planning director? When it all was developed, was to require parking for Black Friday densities. So we've got a lot of paved area out there now that's excessive. So that is an opportunity to reuse of some of that area. And the concept of mixed use housing, or excuse me, mixed uses, the combination of housing and commercial and services. I think that's a valid concept for reuse of the mall facilities and some of the surrounding land area. And you've already taken care of potential for increased stormwater because you've got the bond there. And that's, that's going to be okay. Uh, but I think it could be a very viable economic center to part of Lycoming County, if it's approached in a very comprehensive way, with numerous partners engaged, including the county and the, uh, what are, uh, what is it, are they, it's like coming water sewer authority, township and all of the, I guess, private business associations have all involved.
So that, the parking lot was designed for Black Friday. I never knew that.
Yeah, I would blame you for that, Mr. Walz.
Yeah, that's it. Every time I would go down there, I'd be like, wow, this is really ambitious, how many people, they better make out.
We was in this state.
But it makes sense, I mean.
Back in the day, they.
No, I get it, that, that is, I learned something too, that's really.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The only comment I, that I want to add to all of this and, and, and not, not worrying about the developer, but the unknown is what the scare is right now.
Very much so, and we have a lot of older people in our town.
Right.
And they are on a fixed income and we had a rate, they raised taxes, which they didn't have to raise taxes two years ago that they did, um, but that's watering the damn nap. But with our budget, with, you know, where we're at right now, I mean, you know, can't afford much more, you know, I don't want to see, you know, having to pay more for fire services and EMS, I mean.
It really, you know, to, to Commissioner Metzger's point, it should actually help with your costs because as, as you grow that tax base back into there that's been gone, it should help.
But with Florida, we're not going to get any more money right away.
Right away, but you're going to get, you're going to maintain what you got. So it's, it's not going to, it's not going to shrink yet. And the, the other thing that you got to look at long-term as those decisions are made, those are your community's decisions. You, you do have your own zoning and, and planning in that township now. So, you know, I spent fourteen years in Los Sock Township, nothing got built in Los Sock Township without going through the approval process of the township. I think a lot of people are concerned that because the county made a loan, that that gives Famvest free right to do anything they want. That loan, that's a loan, all we are is a bank. We have no control over Famvest with the exception of foreclosure if they don't pay. Um, and they don't get any special treatment because of the loan. They still have to follow your community's ordinances. So if you have, if, if it's conditional use for housing down there, it's got to go through that process. If housing's not allowed, they got to come in and ask for the zoning variance, no different than any other developer anywhere. So your community still has control of that destiny.
I appreciate you, yeah, verify, you know, with that, because that way I could go back to the different residents and have asked me, you know, state interest or concern for that. You know, maybe both.
Right, nothing can, can get built, I mean, commercially they can do anything, because I, I do know it's already zoned commercial. I don't know what are your other, I, I've never reviewed your zoning, so I don't know what else you have in that community. But it, it is commercial, so anything commercial they're going to be able to do, but anything above and beyond that has to go through the process. And you're locally will make those decisions, county commissioners not making those decisions just because we get a loan.
There has to be more emphasis put on development of western part of Lycoming County, which is a lot of development. Eastern section of itself, um, to the western part of this county.
And, and again, John, I mean, that's, that's local development, so, so you got to get, I mean, I know that, uh, Mr. Strowman's worked very hard at trying to get the roadways up there and got, trying to get some things going. And as, as that can get going and a developer looks at it, I mean, you know, obviously, you know, again, we would be way overstepping ourselves if the Commissioners were saying, hey, build everything in eastern like.
I just said. Western part of the county, same. That's what is being sized right now. I'll point out in the general state.
Right, all I'm saying is if they, they would get the exact same, but you have to have, you have to find the developer.
I know, like I said.
But they would get, any support of the Commissioners would be the same whether eastern or western.
And I can guarantee the past, also development take part in this section of county. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good, John.
I think Jerry made a really good point, it, it's such a comprehensive plan, it's not simple. And the, we think the more people, uh, the more knowledge comes out and the more people get involved, that they'll see it, there's a lot of winning going on. And we think it will say, it will help the tax base and we think it will help the revenue and, and the population and all those things. But it is comprehensive and I think that was a very good word that he used. Um, it's, it's just not simple that there, there's layers to it. And, but as, as we become more and more educated, more and more people get involved, I think we'll see that it's a win. All right, go ahead, sir.
Um, thank you, Commissioners, uh, one, what's his name, the gentleman?
John.
John. John, could you, if you could wait one minute?
John? John, this gentleman asked if you could wait for a minute.
Yeah, just wait for one minute, okay? Um, I didn't, I didn't get up and speak during the.
Not yet, not yet.
My name is Gary Jones from Muncie Township, I'm on the zoning hearing board. Um, I first want to thank my friends for the service during Vietnam, Vietnam, you know, even beyond that. But this, this day of recognition is, you know, believable. I don't, I didn't serve, I was born and I, I graduated from nineteen sixty-eight, ready to go. Um, as we all were, knew it was going to be drafted at some point, so I'm going to go enlist and my family talked me out of investing. And I, and my whole family served, my uncles, fourteen, fifteen, twenty uncles and over the years, my brothers both served in the military. And I got a deferment for one year because I was serving as a statewide Future Farmers of America office. And so I, I. of America office, and so I, I didn't, wasn't, I see too deferment or something like that, but I was ready to go, and I just kind of like waited around, and most of my best friends were veterans coming back from Vietnam. I lived in the Hudson Valley of New York, we didn't spit on our veterans coming back up there, they were our buddies, and they went to col-, I, I decided to go to community college because they were, they were going, they were, veterans were the best students ever. Good friends of mine failed, flunked out of college, got drafted, and became 4.0 students, some of my best friends. And I, I buried friends during the period. I, Agent Orange, I probably buried 17 people, I've been to funerals, that were, died from Agent Orange poisoning, one of my best friends. By the time he was in his mid twenties, he was crippled over from Agent Orange poisoning, but didn't happen, okay? Very quickly, my daughter asked me, she's only 30 years old, yeah, I had her late in life, is this the worst thing currently that you've ever seen? And I said, no. I says, you know, I, I lived through the Vietnam period. It was dark periods, okay? We look back and give great thanks, but everything that was going on was dark. I went to Woodstock with my veteran friends, you know, my uncle who tried to commit suicide six, he's only two years older than me, tried to commit suicide six times after coming back from Vietnam with overdoses, and he was saved each time. I don't share these stories of that period a lot much, but I shared them with my daughter the other day, and I said, that was dark times, not knowing what was going to happen, where we were going to be, you know, where our friends were going to be. I had a good friend, very close friend, was missing in action for six months as a Green Beret. But I just want to thank you so much, and you know, there's guilt involved in my life that I didn't serve. I often think, why wasn't I there? Have I been there? Probably. Would I have been good at it? No, but I wasn't. Very sorry to digress on that here, but on top of that, just want to thank you so much for discussing the, um, Lake Homey Mall, the, the district, okay? And I need to ask, gentlemen, please, stop talking about housing. We have people bring it up down at township meetings, and Denise is one of our supervisors, but we have another supervisor that screams at people, saying that, no, there's never going to be any housing there, stop asking the question, okay? Then I have residents that are reading in the paper, that, I think you were the last one, last year, I think it was the other day with the aluminum company convention, and you mentioned Lake Homey Mall. I could go through down a list of names, everywhere I go in Muncie Borough, Houston, oh, so you guys are getting housing up there at that mall? And I says, I don't think so. I says, you know, our zoning is commercial only at that phase. If they want to do housing, they would have to get a special exception. And on top of that, um, we would have, um, we had two supervisors, they're not here, they're, they're, I'm sorry, they're very seldom called. We know that there was an obvious plan to send our zoning back to county. I don't know if you were involved with it, or if Fanvest was involved with it, or it was just something on your own, but this lady over here, this is Lockley, is going to be one of our new supervisors very soon, she went around the township and got 600 signatures, people saying that we don't want to turn it back to the county, and they did not do it. And I know that we're doing good, our planning commission's doing good, our zoning hearing board, we had the little growth problem with, uh, panels, you have solar heat, solar, solar electricity, but it's, it's, there's only, there's four of us on the zoning hearing board right now, three active and one alternate. We've talked about what we would do, and if you want to talk about mixed housing, or not mixed housing, but upper level modern housing, that's what the residents of Muncie want to say. You know, they're convinced that all we're going to get is senior housing and low income housing. They're convinced of this, because why? They know that why spend $2,000 a month rent on a house, on an apartment, when you can own a house down the street? So they're not convinced that people are going to rent this. Now, we have three or 400 employees coming in, hopefully to fill this aluminum plant. What's their salary range? Is the, is the, is the demographics going to handle it? I've looked at the demographics that the district put out on their webpage, which I signed up for information well over a year ago to get, and I've never gotten anything. Nothing's ever come through on email. I don't, I don't know what they're, we talked about the parking lot, the, and I brought up back when, a couple of years ago, when you're first talking about giving, lending the money, I said, you have an EPA disaster down there possible. That parking lot has been leaking oil down into that soil for years. I know they did a phase one study, and I think they got a grant to do the phase two study, and I don't believe it's even started yet. Um, I heard that they were going to start tearing down the existing wall early, early spring, last year. Was it last year? Yeah, I think they were going to start raising it. They never did, nothing's going, nothing's going on. So it's all gossip and rumor. And then one of our employees sent out a letter to all the residents saying that this was a rumor about housing. Oh, is that a rumor? It's in the newspaper all the time, how can it be a rumor? It's not a rumor, it's coming mostly from you gentlemen, so, our supervisors talked to the newspaper, there is going to be no housing at the Lake Homey Mall. If it works out and they come in and they've never shown our zoning hearing board or planning board any type of plan, will we listen to it? Absolutely. Will we have a lot of questions? Multiple questions, because we've been working on those questions for a very, very long time. So we know where we want to go with it. So you can go to Fanvest, whoever's in charge, and tell them, you know, get started if they want to do something. Bring it to us. We're not saying we would not approve it, but it better be good. And, um, how to, I guess you're saying that you had a, oh, again, you covered the taxes, that LERT tax, I was, I was dead set against it. I was at the township meeting and I kind of beat up, was it John or Ari that night, you know? This is Lockley and I both did, and I didn't see any advantage to the LERT at all. Now, I'm a retired CPA, and, you know, I looked at the, it's, it's basically right now assessed at $9 million with buildings that's there, and that's basically where it's going to stay for them. From the time they build, through six years, seven years, eight years, and eventually phasing it to 10 years. So there's, there's not a lot of revenue to us, maybe some earned income taxes, maybe some LSTs, but there's not a lot of revenue coming in, and hopefully we can get our budget situations fixed in, um, Muncie Township when we do some changes, but right now the supervisors, not Denise, are spending money like drunken soldiers, I mean sailors. It's, 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 I, I tracked a number of funds, and it's, it's ugly, they may have to raise taxes again on this. How much does the county have left in the, uh, what do you call that thing that funded it with, American Relief Fund? I think the $5 million that you loaned them came out of the American Relief Fund, Reserve Fund, is that correct, member?
ARPA, yeah.
Yeah, okay, it came out of the, and...
ARPA had to be fully committed by...
24.
24. 24 is no, there is no additional...
And they, and they, and they committed ours to radio, radios for our tractor and our backhoe, and, um, like a whole bunch of them, it's, it's, we have, it's going to cost $88,000, and secretary said we had $90,000 left, and then we have $70,000. And asked, so we'll be asking them, go to the county and see if you can get more money, because, you know, we can't. And they committed it to radio. Um, and probably, you know, going back to the original law itself, I told them back when they raised the taxes two years ago, if you take, if you take that ARPA money, you can't raise taxes. And they should have sent the money back. I told, I think Mike Wiley was an attorney at the time, I told him, it just went on deputies. Um, they kind of changed the law, you can use it, just put it in the general fund now, because we're such a small township. And we're only 1,200 people, and I know that the, the school board, somebody from the school board did claim that they saw a plant at one time, which of course, we never did. And I, two years ago, I think it was John and Ari were here, and they, they came and they wanted to discuss it with me in the future, the only power that I never, um, I don't know what's going on. If I owned it, I'd slap a for sale sign on it and take anything I can get over $15 million for it. Um, you know, it's just, you know, you just sold that, it's, it's, yeah, it's location, location's not great for the aluminum factory, but would you get $2.5 million for that property? No, it's 100 acres, you know, and, and they want, I have no idea what the selling prices on that, but they're in a, that's $75,000 an acre cost, plus the building, and so they need a lot of money out of that. And I don't know who they're trying to sell this thing to. I have no idea. I wish they would come to our township with a plan. And, you know, you sign non-disclosure agreements, NDAs, and what was your, remember law, and you know, arms-length transaction, you know, there's got to be equal consideration, okay? You give them the silence that they want, but what did they give, you gentlemen? What did they give our supervisors down in Muncie? Nothing as far as I know. You don't have any obligation to be a secret. Open up, tell us what they're doing, let's get this thing moving so we can help, rather than being a thorn in the side, and that's what we are when we don't know. We're a problem, and we don't want to be a problem, we want to help. So that's all I have to say this day. Hopefully we can get things going in the right direction, but please, anybody puts a microphone in your face, or a reporter comes up and say, there's going to be no housing in, at the Lake Homey Mall, ever, okay? Then if it happens, that'd be good. Thank you very much. I'm sorry for taking too much time to get that very serious.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any online?
Uh, real quickly too, one from Lakeo Secrets, um, encouraging commissioners to attend the medical funding community forum on 31 March at YMCA at 8:30 PM, and then one from MCG, very unfortunate that one of the brave Vietnam veterans chose this holiday event, personal misguided political opinions on this public platform.
If I could just make one comment about, say, nothing's happening, there's a lot of things that are happening behind the scenes. But when you have non-disclosures with these companies, when you say, by telling us and we can help you, by, by, not, by breaking the non-disclosures, it hurts the process. And that's why these companies have non-disclosures. It's, it's, it's a complicated, it, it takes time, it's, you know, as you said, it's a $15 million project, it's going, you're going to have to demolish buildings, you have, you have, you know, econ, or, uh, ecological studies that need to be done, like, it is a big project. But when, when these companies that aren't just fly-by-night, you know, mom and pop, when, when these national corporations that they're talking to, when they come in and say non-disclosure, like, we just can't say, well, we're, but the 1,200 people of Muncie Township want to know, because if they do, then the whole deal falls apart, and then again, the way the area gets better is if the project succeeds. So I understand that everyone wants to know now, we would love to make announcements now, but making announcements now actually hurt the process, they don't help the process. And, and we want, we wish we could have made announcements six months ago, because then we wouldn't have, because we know there's, there's nervousness about the unknown, the fear of the unknown is scary for everyone, and we would like to alleviate those fears, but we're not in a legal position where we can do it, and it would be counterproductive to the project in general.
When you're working on projects and, and developers working with, with leases that are millions and millions and millions of dollars, that doesn't happen overnight. Takes a lot of time. So I know it's been 18 months, maybe a little longer, I think maybe 20 months now, okay? But it's not like, it's not being worked on.
They have their first accrued interest payment.
So it's, it's, like I said, we want what's best for the area, and so do they.
Our chairman of supervisors, what they're saying, I know what he, signing non-disclosure, but they told us. Do you want questions on legality of those non-disclosures?
Being someone who has signed them, I've, I've, I've got to follow what I sign, to not disclose.
Yeah. We sign non-disclosures, that's what we're going to stay with.
Yeah, but I'm pointing out to do this, a lot of questions about legality of this first.
I think, I think the biggest point that everybody's got to understand is, is Commissioner Metzger said, when you're working with large national chains, that's who, they're not working, it's not, it's not a mom and pop, they're not looking for a grocery store, a local, you know, deli to go into there, they're looking at large national chains, you have to be very confidential, you know, when you're working with those folks, and it takes time, it doesn't happen. I mean, unfortunately, most people don't realize there's, there, a lot of the development that exists within Lake Homey County takes years. I mean, even if you look, you know, drive down, drive down 80 and C in Danville where they started tearing down motels, that's a local developer from Williamsport. Those people are probably wondering, what's he doing too? But it doesn't happen overnight. First got his stuff torn down, now it's years.
How long have you been working on your aluminum plant?
Aluminum plant? Aluminum plant's been about three years.
Yeah.
Three years.
Years.
Yeah, in the process of back and forth.
And still not complete yet.
Right. We don't have the closing... And, and, and we get emails about that too, that people can't figure out who the Transaluminum is, well, drive down Tryon Avenue, and you'll see Transaluminum. It's a real existing live business in Lake Homey County, but yet, the fear of what are they going to build in Montgomery says, oh my God, don't let it happen. Like they don't exist, and they do exist.
I know one of the, one of the most eye-opening things that I've learned on this job is just listening to Mark tell stories about, at the township. He said every time that they had any sort of development building, the first fear was that they heard from everyone, I hear it's low income, I hear it's low income, I hear it's low income. And I think he said in his 14 years or whatever, they never did a, a low income housing project, but every time it was housing, people's immediate fear is, oh my God, it's low income.
I was going to emphasize how...
Well, they do, that's, that's been there, that's been there since the 60s, since the 60s.
But everything that, everything that came across my desk as supervisor in Walsock Township was going to be low income, no matter what it was.
You're correct, you never gave a LERT.
We've never given, we never gave a LERT tax in Walsock.
The other thing that brings a question for all this fashion companies, is the number of retailers, fashion retailers that are basically throughout business, and that number completely increases every day, so that cuts down on the publishing. And these, I think, curious, but that also is a big question. They not make a problem on that side, less than full if they have a problem.
I think that's why you got to be very respectful and thankful of this, of this investment team, that is, uh, really working hard to bring something to our community, because it is, we're a challenge. When, when people look at the demographics of Lake Homey County and, and Williamsport, we're a small fish to what a lot of these big retailers, especially, you know, to your point, John, so many retailers have closed in small communities such as Williamsport and Lake Homey County.
I'm talking about fashion.
Right, national retail, so many of them have closed in the local, but you drive down to Philadelphia, I mean, I just drove through Moncom, Mon, Montgomery Township over the weekend, I was down there for Penn College baseball, that was Montgomery Township had a ton of business. I mean, they had every change, their Barnes and Nobles was three times the size of the Barnes and Noble that was down here at the Lake Homey Mall.
Look at the size, the, the size and number of houses.
Right.
The congestion of traffic.
Absolutely.
The demographics...
Is, is there to support it, and we don't have that. So the fact that Fanvest is working their butts off trying to bring something like that to us, we just got to give them the time to get it accomplished.
I think I have to say, it's not good about Washington, if that, John, the longer it goes, more it increases.
I think there's a lot of work going on with our planning department.
Yeah, our planning department's working on it. We were just talking about it last week.
Fifty meetings where Lashu Ron has been discussed.
So they're still, they're still being discussed. It's not something that's...
There are lots of them. They're a lot slower because we're going.
No, I was just bringing up, this is going all the way to long, I only have something. Our leadership, not being prepared to go to the state through.
Perfect, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please bails, okay, we complete our agenda, so we'll be adjourned till uh. April the second, I believe, third, April third. At ten AM, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.